All right, Tom, in the next little forty meetings, I see at least, so we move on to identify future work opportunities. And as I mentioned before, I forget that we can discuss the MOU which we make in future work meetings. And details or let's see how we can. I don't know if jail project update here.
Just to give you a little update about the jail project course last week. Very good meetings. We scheduled a total of twenty-six meetings over the last three days. Of all those that were played, talking. Pat, first, some stock, it's a special group, he's got some more data, it's gonna pull up the job. Almost twenty-six meetings, first we started out with the same meeting, we did run into some tech, the technology issues with that first meeting. And so I'm working right now to try to discuss with Chairman Jackson and C P, Chairman C P, Mr. Justice. So we had that program, we had a committee, the design committee, finance committee. On that first day, Wednesday, we started out with Bill, and Mr. Eric, and our staff over there, and they're finding things. Also, they were experiencing, they have a share of administration. And then at ten thirty, we had a lot of important scenes from the theory of me. We had a great turnout, a lot of information we came from that, I'm really excited about. A lot of the partners are looking at partnering. We also had. This is last time we are, you put ink on paper, some of them said, that's a good place, sounds kind of nice. Sorry, I missed it? You don't want to get. So, sure, would that be, whether they had fifty or not, it's still, whether, whether there's a person on the fine, that they're not. Buying beds and all like that, then there's usually a negotiated price for that. And that's something we, I, I can sold him share a little bit, that any who's.
So say long term, you're talking like ten years?
At least, that is, he has guys.
Oh, for a little thing, it'd be a matter of, you know, if we put it for too long, and then we need the beds, and we gotta, we gotta have an help too.
So if you transition on this thing, whatever our needs are, we're gonna wait until we go where our needs are. And we're gonna slowly transition that end goal, by the time we hit the end of that thirty years, that whole jail is gonna be our, our issues, our problems. Between that time, we could put, we can, we can help pay for that to do a sense. One of the other exciting things in this conversation with the Feds, Marshall Service. They no longer did long-term contracts, last long-term contract, they were going to go to the Sherburne, now even. They built a very nice facility at Sherburne, with outside of the box, or what they've done. This place is the house for us. First, we were moving, sort of, that affects state of North Dakota, the Marshall Service has to go, I just fall, so they fill the house. They will not try to come to us. Those meetings I've got scheduled coming up here, and I hope they can get, take that hour, that's some detail, but we actually did down the. Try to get enough to deal with that first thing. The local Marshall Services, that's our service side cities. Of course, they have jurisdiction under federal transportation, that's actually part of the prison issue at our list, federally, in our jail. This week, or this month, at home, we've got several titles that will be placed on courthouse. One that, I don't think, I remember, that's the transition of things in one year, so they may have, they're the whole federal courthouse. It only exists with the house, privilege here. We had good conversations, of course, on that, I haven't spoken on that, but this year it was in. A lot of information is coming back to be followed, they talk about cooperation, and what we can do, what we're currently doing, what we should expand. Right, Becky?
Yeah.
And again, probation, probation for all, that, that day, and also damage measures. And then on thirty, we took a tour of the gym, they spent about two hours over there, with the client, they actually practiced some gimmicks. And the inmates were very open about what they would like to see in jail. And, and it was, my understanding was they're very respectful of the process, and they receive the information from them. Our MIS partners have played a role, whatever this is, they met with them as well. Everything is transitioning, we're gonna see everything in a lot of courthouse, and here it is. That would be quite a long time, actually, right now, we can do it, but if somebody's housing our jail, that has a want, let's say, pro county. We can hold court, in our court, of our. So it's, it's, it's just a direction, and unfortunately, it was one of the good things, I support, because I've been advocating for us to deal with the virtual inmates for a very long time. Get me a staff along with the state attorney, that, them as well, make them miss lunch. Here's what, you're slated for an hour. It was a very good, I think, they don't, they miss, sure, sure. And, yeah, Jennifer's line there, but they, again, information to receive. They also met again with the public defender's office afterwards, but I think right now, it's only four people. How did that conversation, the issue, yeah, how did that conversation, when, when they lost the chat, did, did, how did Chris George help you work? I don't believe Chris was there, I believe it was just Jennifer and. Judges came back in, yeah, the other two judges, and essentially said, we showed that we thought. So there are so many people that are on in jail, that they feel short in jail, and a lot of this is based on the fact that we've had in the past. And then, of course, they find that the court, the defender's office, their staff, and then a lot of information came along. I'm excited, it validated some of the things that I, that we didn't sign at all. Some of our issues are wrong, so a lot of validation came from that. I'm really, they certainly, some of the words, kind of, in our, so, questions. That was one of the, it's funny that you said that before the judges, that was one of the updates, evening, in my time. That whole issue is not true. People in jail, because, if they knew those costs, and do it, that's huge, that's a serious concern. Because we know this, like, ten years ago, if you get, your first people who are as a misdemeanor, under a certain limit, that's a, that's a, you picked up, the rest of the police, and you're on the way. If you're driving with a twice-three limit, or if you're on your second E D Y, ten years, but you're getting ten years to jail. You're not doing that, and, and that's just. Two of those tables, so, and, and you know, you're, when you're, they, they, the first time, you understand, and they're gonna come in and be guilty, and you're fine, but when you're on your second E D Y, you're not doing the jail time. And you're going to jail, it's worth, prosecutions are. Last Monday, they didn't even have a custody, and flipping that house down. We had set our best of Friday, four best nights, so we, we just don't have that. This is kind of, it's hard to move to that, because they wanna go, they want to put people in jails, against the grain, not to put people in. And they have, they're excited about who will go to jail. But now, when we fill up our jail on Friday night, and it's a long, long weekend, what are we gonna do with all those people? Well, that means that we have to start asking, that means that we have five places to take, our, our, we have the same problem, we are. Now we're going out, second tier, third tier companies, and that brings a lot of problems. I honestly think that I have a difficulty working both of these shifts, patrol, they transport and process some of the objects. So, things that I think would want to arrest, whatever we can, I, again, period, that came out of this whole thing. Here, very good process, how it's done, again, it's, I think we're gonna validate what we can say online, and we'll solve numbers, and some criteria.
Sure, the, the setting of limit at ID, I assume that's because of, not lack of staff, not because of the DOC, so, because we got a hundred and eighteen?
Hundred and eighteen, and we can expand it to one thirty-two, one hundred. One eighteen is maybe not really, that's, that's all.
So it's because we did that scouting, to be able to go up to.
Now, like, I mean, that's Landra, the light at the end of the tunnel is getting bigger. We are just probably completely full of the full-time inmates that are available, now we're bringing on the parts inmates. And as we slowly bring them on, get a few training processes, to the point that they can support post, as we start rolling with this. Essentially, we're getting back here. Will we be, still have some people up there, we're, we're still ready. Chair, like, the last time, I think you talked to us, we had like eighty-five percent staffing levels, where, where you say we are now, then? We're getting back up, I think we're close to sixty-seven percent, I think if I was holding the bread, we got almost thirty-eight percent staff. We have the highest number of salts on our spot, on our staff. That's just the number that we cut down on now, so savings through, not only our, our employees, savings through inmates, we gotta throw a, throw a lot of caution. So, people, right, but it's what we. Any questions?
Sure, mentioned Justice Planners, when are they gonna be back in town?
So, they're still gonna have some work meetings scheduled forward, if they have other information, you wanna get anything to chat to us, then, of course. Construction engineers are part of that as well, so they have to follow up, if they want to do, and they're still seeking more of that. Again, conversations that started, like, so we put the board's office, to Pat, and, and, there, we were starting conversations about, I have this data that I can share with you. Just in time to find it, you can plug it into that list, and I'm excited to hear that they. Kudos to also, the fact that they have a number made up for these three years, the moment, yeah. They were so pleased, they're not, they're not getting. That just looks, that, you know, I understand, you gotta get the stuff right away now, like, that too, then look, that again, the, with that.
So do we get to discomp the contract? No, sure, I'm, I'm going through the tire reading, Justice Planners, I'm absolutely impressed with the time, with the quality of work that they're providing.
Joe Penny, you know, I I don't know if there's a meeting or two ago, there was questions on whether he was still on the planning board. But he stepped down, but I think he might have had a question on whether he was still on the planning board.
On the planning commission?
Yeah, he is a a talking George, so we will, yeah, continue with my
We, we are, need to come up and get somebody to appoint to that position. So we actually have a planning commission meeting last night, he did not attend last night, but
It sounded, I think, lack of mission, I think, that
Recommendation. And then we'll have to approve that appointment.
Like we, like you want to advertise for it, we can get the right, the correct information to the state. And we can warn and out, we can advertise for it, but it's a favor to notice all that stuff, plenty of application.
We actually had a planning commission meeting last night, fair enough, brought that up to Brent through and he said that the last time that they had that, they actually put it in the county newsletter, probably the county newsletter just went out and only goes out quarterly, so that doesn't really work this time, so we'll have to do it the way that the commissioner said. And I think that that would be something we need to do.
We don't get some, they're a lot of rules.
Yeah, well, we, I think we need to force this, are we sure that it makes sense? And
Me too. Can we, you know, if, if those of us that have social media accounts can, can, you know, put the word out that way to try to get a it'd be nice to get a couple of applicants. At least one against.
There's a reason for that, because it happened to be at the Ammar position, it's not a specific representative for one of us.
I'm sending that invitation up all of the barracks that weren't cracking. Have a good day away, son.
There you go.
Motivated.
How about the people that are not having the short term vacation, that's next door to them.
So, uh, sure, so, so that is for your membership request.
Yeah, listen, did you request?
Okay, we got that on consent and are you going to?
Well, um, and that's service, we have a contract service. He said it isn't.
Oh, maybe so.
One of the back ways way back to the jail as well, uh, this week, I did submit to, uh, Congress to stop. He's looking at a list of things, projects that were, you know, this is, and I did submit to him for detail requests. Consider as being one of your part of the, you know. Yeah, some pretty rough estimate, you throw it out there, but again, that's a lot of the ideas that we got, I got that coming out. Feedbacks that they had, that's really the start, and said, um, to his office, uh, he replied to that, so hopefully it brings us to that direction of that. Uh, I put our toll blessing cost, probably, to me, and requesting for twenty twenty five.
Is, has there been any, anything similar to that? State or, or patient market?
I don't know who the other jail is, but we haven't shown this, so we've got a small amount of money out of this last body, you know, the state debt, but in federal partnerships, go back to information I, I received from the, the chief. I was not telling, but this, we tested, we, we need, and we're probably based right off in Washington DC that, I believe that's probably the project. So, uh, again, that brings back, um, cultural things for the, for the entry program, rehabilitation program in jail. A lot of, you guys, you guys guess a lot of lines, I'm trying to guess those.
Well, you know, Commissioner Austin and I are going to be, you know, that, uh, they have to cap the the next couple of days, and I was just kind of wondering, uh, should, should we pitch to for local legislation, which they are just, all the funds are
They're trying to figure out how to spend ninety million dollars.
Just a million, just running out of a billion, you know, both, both people figure out where it's meant to.
I, I think they're all on this, so, yeah, so I'm, so we'll bring it up. That's, it's too bad that we're at right now. Uh, that's my course of this new year of that.
How many there's?
Are you gonna be done?
No.
Oh, we might, so I mean, if, if it's something you want a few years from now, mentioning it now is probably good to get people thinking about it, and it takes very Yep. It's pretty scattered, we started right now.
The damage of that over the pedal, the, the, the hooks of events, you know, they were taken and, and costing them a lot because of using better money. And so that's something that we want to make sure we take into account.
Right, I think my federal context, it, it much, much better than the state's context. So, the point for Sherwood County is not yet a Sherwood inmate in their jail. We are sorry, but, uh, inmates in second. I have an interesting concept. So they found all of their inmates out to neighboring, so they got a long-term, I have it right now. Geographic is just absolute. Yeah, when, um, my, my experience, well, my, my, um, my non-incarcerated personal experience in coming to county jails, since I was a cook in the Meeker County Jail, and I, I knew the sheriff, and who was known better than the sheriff for twenty years, or fifteen anyway. The Meeker County Jail overbuilt their jail, um, thinking that they would be able to then be a, you know, overflow for the metro. And it worked when crime rates were really high, but there are times when crime rates are not really high, and it's kind of cyclical up and down. And so it really, it was difficult for them to maintain their jail, so when I hear you talking about making a deal with Menomone, as long as it's a deal, like you said, in that sort of a situation, where we're not, we're not like building on spec, right, we have, we have ironclad agreements with other people, so we know that those extra beds are going to be paid for. Otherwise, we could set ourselves up for, for a cost overrun, so it would be difficult then to, to, uh, to You know, it's made it a pain just on spec, just with assumptions. And, and at times it worked really well, and at other, other times it ended up being very costly. Trying to move down to the south of Dakota. Montiel's the sheriff down there, and they're having similar issues either as they overbuilt their shell. And right now they have trouble even keeping it, just the best of them, and so, uh, that affects boxes. So we need to factor that in, the main thing is, you know, the jails out in that, they built fairly, built jails fairly recently. Next one was probably in Washington, but they're able to take care of, uh, what was expected to be a certain part of it.
I just wanted to mention that, but I, I think that that's on, on your mind.
Absolutely.
We have those costs.
Tell us, we really like the idea of the initial position, we really did look at that, and we've already done so many conversations, had those conversations with that, the, uh, pretty then all the other permission, uh, permission, yeah. The same problems here, trying to find staff, I saw that, the big problem down there, starting to find staff. Jail. And, uh, we, we, we operate, cooperate, and see what happens. A lot of the ideas, but I think some of them.
So before you retire, if you do something, the next guy you did, it went up to at the commies and drop back some money.
You bet. I think, yes, more time. I had a very brief informal conversation with County Commissioner Koosh, and they started the conversation with Lake Forest. So there's a lot of change there. I think there is, but one of the problems that we have in the, the geographic stuff was, was a travel from there all the time, by that town. You know, under the technical falls, hundred ten of that, so. I looked at, you know, Koosh and Lake Forest are sixty miles, seventy mile apart, so that's kind of seemed like a good relationship. And we ended up, worst case scenario, in the closing, imagine that we would have those ones just walking through the street, so the Cass County already falls straightaway from Ryder, which is, it's at sixty miles. And they do that twice a day, at least one, there's your manpower that can happen. I looked at, we have, so one of our different teams, most of the washers, that's processed within the jail, that's I mean, I always test, we're in Los Angeles. Uh, where are we at right now, we're in, uh,
Nine different, nine different counties right now, so we're growing, uh, we've got, uh, Douglas, uh, trying to think. I'm, I'm escaping.
Oh, we have Hubbard?
Uh, no, Hubbard will not, uh, they do not, they have our staff, we're actually, might have a little bit more, uh, Meeker, um, right, we have a few in there.
All the way down with Meeker, right?
Um, let's see, I, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm
Richard and I drive to, uh, to Douglas County once a month, we can help out with some transportation. We had a driver back of ours. That, that appears, it is, it's a urgent problem, but I think we're working, we're actually working very well. Uh, but we're still running issues, and that, so just last week, around three o'clock, I went to Depp's, I'm going to take a rest. Just so we can have a, a Friday, the week, I don't know, we can go search it by page out of the projects. Just to, hold on a moment, just
And just to make it clear, um, it's a lot to do with our classification right now, we have a lot of specialty classification, and we are full, we are full, we really do not have special So we do this in this house, we're
And those are a lot more difficult than needs to transfer other facilities.
Yes.
Resource. And these are people that are that have state facility that are, that are available, you know. She's the, uh, facility, she's here. You got food service? Oh, we got, we have here. So, uh, I'm a little frantic, I'll say it to you, but, uh, she said to me, uh, essentially, there, there are men in our contract, or kids, they're able to use, or make a trip, but what if they the cost of relief, and also food costs, and, and food costs showing up, uh, and it's affected us to the amount of about twenty seven percent over the last year. We, uh, didn't budget for that much. So that's been a great problem.
So, that was one of my questions, is what's the budget?
Uh, basically, uh, what we have for budget impact, looking at per trade, and again, with our fluctuating numbers, it, it is, uh, the sky's the limit for us, it seems like lately. Uh, because we can have as few as sixty five to eighty individuals, and then we can have up to a hundred and five or a hundred and ten, I believe. So it is based on per trade, um, I did do a quick, um, analysis of over the years, I did print off the numbers, usually, just to look at that. Um, what I hoped over again this afternoon, just kind of crunching some of those numbers, the way that our, um, food service has pretty much increased in cost without that, just since, uh, sixteen, when the classification came down, and we had to start a thousand people accounting, therefore took our population levels down. When our population levels are lower, that means that our cost per trade has risen. And as you can see, over, uh, uh, over time, our ADP, which is average daily population, we started out one thirteen in two thousand sixteen, and uh, in two thousand seventeen, we're at one sixteen, was pretty average. Um, now, in twenty twenty was ninety, and twenty twenty one was the six, just due to the difference, uh, way that we class and how things settle about. So, uh, budget impacts, uh, you're looking at an average of twenty seven, uh, percent increase over the last. Right now, we adopted two hundred and sixty thousand for an annual, um, so if you take that, multiply it by twenty seven percent, that's pretty much where you're going to be with that.
What we're probably going to see.
We have been with, uh, this vendor summit for, uh, pretty much the duration of our jail, and looked through earmark, um, I have attempted multiple times to try to get contact through them. Uh, I have not been successful, I have made, uh, personal phone calls, uh, voicemails, emails, even through their client contact or the website, have not got any, any success. Other jails have actually, uh, requested, uh, senior living centers to assist with their meals. Um, usually the smaller, uh, population jails, and they obviously charge per meal. Usually you have a jail staff member go over with a van, pick up meals and process them through, obviously, clients to make for the amount of, uh, people we serve. Also, there's other jails that have county members that actually are running the jail. That means that we would be hiring those individuals rather than, um, rather than just other vendor, the, and rather than contracting help. Um, and it is, I think it's a catch twenty two, I think we all, we all are approved that, six one, half a dozen the other. Um, however, I know also Julie, uh, had to tune her horn a little bit, she has been with us for thirty one years, for the entire duration of the jail, and she does run a tight ship. Does a very, very good job, and, uh, um, any inmate that is inmate worker underneath her supervision knows that, uh, they need to be allowed, so.
And Chris, I'm just basically about seventy thousand dollar annual increase of total cost.
Yeah, three hundred and thirty one thousand.
Yeah. About seventy thousand additional, on top of the two sixty, you have the three hundred and thirty thousand separate.
Back in the beginning, when I first started, we called all the things, that we need common deals, and then right down, and put all the vaccine, all that, and see if they're back. By smaller numbers.
And this does incorporate the, um, uh, summit does make sure that the dietitian reviews our meals annually, so it does meet the twenty four hundred I have to work and take for each individual inmate, they do do, if there's somebody allergic to tomatoes, or onions, or just anything like that, they are accommodating all across the board. So it is, uh, it is a challenge, um, also with religious beliefs, there's any form of culture, uh, requests or diets, those are definitely also taken care of in consideration. Um, our cooks and the support that they have, they work hard, um, and, uh, to be competitive, uh, these, these individuals um, do have to raise their prices, I think, with everybody across the way, and a lot of the counties that spoke with, um, they have varying raises from all the way to from five percent all the way up to forty percent across the state, anybody who has been contracted with something.
So if we're, uh, you know, contract, and they're competing, we're really competing, but if we can't gather other, uh, bids.
It's, um, earmark would be the, the company that I can hopefully get ahold of, and like I said, I do my darkest to try to contact them, and have not been able to, so I am, uh, not stopping, I will try to get some.
Do you think that that's indicative of, of their appetite for, for the contract, I mean?
It's very They're hung up for, they may, they may not have individuals up in this area, it is a unique area, um, it is, we almost have this mind-stopping.
What do you call?
Yeah, in fact, I used to be a jail clerk for, uh, for earmark, uh, back in Meeker County, so, yeah, I was on a district league rule. It was something, it was just, yes, the same thing every, all the rule, yeah. I don't want to play the cannibal backwards.
Yeah, right.
So Mr. Chair, Bernie, do you have a motion from us to expand the budget? Yeah, by seventy thousand, and we're gonna have to vote a pledge amendment to, uh, make up the difference.
And that's already in the agenda, and where's it coming from? I was being captain of office.
Oh, I thought you were asking me, or is it?
No.
Oh, well, uh, I, I'm hoping we continue to, uh, find some salary savings, that's gonna hopefully drive us, and then I don't always think that for mine.
Is, is that a Joey question?
Hey, there. No, I, that's something we need to gather in time, although we can look to see where your salaries are at, they can only be, where they pretend them to be, and see if we can find funding to, from somewhere else to, to cover that difference, but, um, at this point, I haven't looked into.
Just one more, Bernie, we gotta figure that out. Cause your, your, your labor savings are already going to transportation costs and lodging costs, right? To a certain extent, yes. So we, we've got that set on, on the, on the side, we have, uh, that, that sets like, who transfers, uh, for, 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 for weeks. Again, it will increase plan, you know, and the, and the, hopefully. Yeah, they find that, and we're not, uh, it's a budget, and then we have to, uh, try to we go on our shoulders.
So, so with this, uh, with this amendment, going from number one to, to, to make their first one to does that mean we could potentially be coming back?
It should be twenty twenty three.
Yeah, so it's a very
This was technically, I'm sorry, this is an amendment, and to the amendment, and this is just the amendment for last year's.
And there's going to be another?
There should not be another, that, there should not be another contract, this contract actually, our comments, which should last until twenty twenty three. Okay.
So will I, will you, in on the consent agenda, are we bringing nineteen volts as high as under seventy thousand dollars? Is that the intent of the motion? If there's money to be found.
I think, I think we're gonna have to get, and, uh, funnel over, and, uh, get, and have that.
But you're asking us to approve it.
Yep, and then we'll come back to you and say, this is where the direct access to, uh,
Okay, so this is five blocks, everybody's turning.
I'm on the chair.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, that it's kind of a not to exceed figure, and it's a continuing discussion. So we moved that for consent agenda, and I approve that, and hopefully it will be, we have, yeah. Good care. Just the only other thing I might add is that this is going to be a trend that we're going to be able to address on all operational this seven to ten percent inflation rate, it's everywhere, everywhere, and not isolated from it, we're seeing it across the entire spectrum, from transportation, exactly, it's everything, and it's, it's, all, all of that stuff, so I, I don't know how we can realistically expect to grow budgets at two percent, or three percent, or even four percent with that kind of pressure, uh, so this is a bit of a preview, and I just wanted to advise that you should brace yourself, because there will likely be more of this to come in the future.
Since you're the state.
And just for the record, Jim and I are on a budget for the last year, so it won't be us this summer, so, two and three, you can figure this out. It is, it is gonna be, it's gonna be tough, fiscal, with fiscal, slow, with fiscal, whatever you want, it's gonna, it's gonna be there. Check that, Lisa. The good news is you're all on the second campus, so we'll see you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Charlie, and Charlie.
Thank you.
All right, so I don't see them in the twenty twenty two district teams.
Everyone, so, um, our district today is myself, Kevin Taff, G I S director, and Tom Berry are administrator. So we, at this point, um, thought it would be good to bring to you where we're at right now, what our plans are going forward, and, and just to hear in dialogue, uh, what you would like to see, um, when we get together after the city goes through their process and go from there. Um, so I'll just start out with, again, just, obviously, redistricting is the process of re-drying the boundary lines to ensure equal representation in each voting district. Um, it's done, the steps are federal redistricting, which was done late last year, state redistricting, which ensures, that you're aware, it's just happened. Um, the judicial district put out their new maps, um, for the judicial services, put out their new maps as to where those senate and house boundaries would be. Um, and now, once that is completed, it moves on to municipalities, so townships are now looking at, um, designating their polling places, their precincts. Coming to you at the next board meeting, since you act as the township board for unorganized townships in Belchana County. We will bring you the unorganized, um, re-establishing of their precincts and their polling places. That will have you two at the, at the next board meeting. In the meantime, the city of Bemidji and other cities are working on their redistricting plans. Kevin has been working pretty closely with G I S director at the city, um, and they have now, this month, to get their plans in place and get that adopted by their council at the end of March. Anything you'd like to add in the regarding the city's work they're doing right now?
Yeah, so like Joey said, we're working proactively with the city of Bemidji right now, rather than waiting for them to say, okay, we're finished with our process, here's what the Bemidji city boards are gonna look like, we're proactively working with them, so that we have a sense of what it is that they need to look at adjustments, I think we all probably assumed that with the last annexation from Northern Township into the city of Bemidji. So those residents going into Ward Three, that Bemidji Ward Three probably was gonna be too big in population, and we would need to make adjustments to account for that. So they will need to make some of those adjustments, and we're working proactively with them to have a sense of what it is that they need to look at changing. So, we've got, the ball rolling with that, um, they have, they have a proposal put together for the city council for next Monday, coming up on the seventh. So the city council will possibly be taking action on grouping the districting plans for Bemidji's wards Monday next week. If they do, if they adopt that already on Monday next week, that opens up a lot more time for us to have everything finished up, so we have less of a time crunch.
After that meeting, so that meeting is Monday the seventh, our committee is getting together on the ninth to hopefully review what the city has, and then start working on, on options that we can put together and present to you. We'll do that prior, or as soon, we'll do that as soon as we get options put together. The next step after those options are put together is there will be a public hearing to review, so those options are presented to the public, the public then has the option to comment on what they would like to see, what they perceive as pluses and minuses, or whatever they'd like to comment on for redistricting. And then, by the end of April, so April twenty sixth, I mean, exactly, the county has to have their plan in place, so when we pulled up the calendar and looked at dates for that public hearing. If, if the city does end up adopting a plan next Monday, that would give us quite a few weeks before their deadline that we can start working on this, which would mean April fifth would be a perfect date for the public hearing, and that's your first meeting in April. Um, if we wait till the second meeting in April, that really pushes up the Um, if we wait till the second meeting in April, that really pushes up, that gives us less than a week. If something happens at that public hearing and you are wanting to review different options or do something different thing is presented or talked about at the public hearing, doesn't really give us enough time then to meet that deadline that, that redistricting has required. So we would really like to see, um, the first meeting in April be the public hearing date, um, and then move forward from there. Some of the items that were, we will be looking at, we, we played with a few different options. I believe the city is, they have five wards, so they're going to try to keep population as close to each other as possible, which is a little over three thousand residents per ward. So if we take that average and plug those numbers into the, our redistricting spreadsheets that we use, where we sit right now, we have to make changes. If the city does that, that would leave District Two, Two, with too big of a population. So we would have to, we would have to do some redistricting, do some moving around. Some of the things that we have talked about is having, um, so there's five wards, having three of those wards be with one commissioner district and that commissioner not having any townships. That would be one option we could look at. Another option would be to spread out the wards so that each of the commissioners down in the Bemidji area would receive a ward. So that ward would represent a ward, so that would be taking one of the wards from District Two and giving it to District Three, um, Richard's district, and then that would move around, we'd have to move around some townships to make up to equal out the population for, for our, um, districts, yes.
Do you want to input from us on that?
We really would. Um, that's one of the things that we wanted tonight is, those are the two thoughts that we've had to start with. And if you have other options that you would like us to look into, we, yes, definitely would like to have input on that.
I, I would like to, to put, to address that specifically. The first thing that I wanted to say is, is I would ask you guys to ignore our personal addresses where we live in the district. I, I mean, I don't know, but I hope that you're just looking at the population and not worrying about, you know, because it's like District Two is not my district, it's the district that I have to live in, right? So the other thing that I would say is, if, I would, I will not support breaking Bemidji up into five or even three or four. I, I think, like, if you wanna look at some of the worst examples of gerrymandering, look at Austin, Texas. Austin is a very blue city and they had it chopped up so that Austin is, I mean, I think seven or eight different congressional districts. And I think there's maybe one Democrat representing Austin at all. Uh, if it was broken up differently, there would be probably four congressional seats that represented Austin that were blue. Uh, and I'm not saying we're, we're nonpartisan, but just as a matter of, of what they did was they took this huge metropolitan area and they chopped it up, so there is no representation of that, that metropolitan area, split up into a bunch of different pies. So if you do that with us, with us, the city, and I'm saying this as a city resident, take each inhabit, sort of each commission, each district has a city ward. Now you've completely fractured the representation of the city in Bemidji, it's a third of the population. We should have one or two seats that are urban seats and not split up that urban area and, and, and have it overwhelmed them by the, by the rural constituents. So I, what I would like to see is one, 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 uh, district that is three city wards and then another district that is two city wards and then whatever, um, townships would have to go to break it up. That's, that's, so that's my, that's my opinion, it may not be even my colleagues, but that's, that would be.
And.
But that's a form of gerrymandering.
That effectively, sir.
Of making sure that, 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 I, I don't know why, you don't have to laugh at me, I'm being deadly serious.
Well, I, I'm not laughing at you.
No. Crazy this.
But it's a form of gerrymandering, right?
To set. To make sure that the, the way, the way redistricting should always be is the population is as evenly divided, like the city's doing their five wards as evenly divided as possible. So you need to draw a line that divides the population in a five into five equally, in the perfect world, into five equally spaced wards, right? Right, there's two, there's two, there's two basically competing, um, goals of, of redistricting, as I understand it. One is making least amount of change possible and the second one is keeping common interest communities together. And I would say that a municipality is a, is a, is a common interest or a common community. And to, to, to fracture it, it is, I think, is not, not appropriate. There's a difference.
Population doesn't make it possible to do what you said anyways, so. We have to have approximately around ninety two hundred residents in each one of our populations, give or take. And the, the city wards, you would only be at six thousand if you only had two city wards.
No, I said two, yeah, yeah, right, I said two townships and then, so, I mean, I don't know the math, but it'd say, be like, um, uh, four, wards four and five in Belchana and Bemidji. You know, maybe that's, that's maybe not perfect, that's, that's, that's my thought. So then you have, the more urban, um, sections are, are, are being held intact and then the rural sections are being held intact. You're not having a, a split in a, in a, um, in a given, uh, district that is, that is two thirds rural and one third.
What are, uh, Joey, what is the number of people in each redistricting spot?
Right, pre-redistricting, it ranged from eighty three hundred, District Five was the smallest, to ninety five hundred, District Two was the largest. So that was the range.
Most average.
Pre-redistricting.
If we do the perfect average.
Average is, I believe it's ninety two forty five, nine thousand two hundred and forty five, just off my, my memory.
And you have to be within five or 10% or even closer than that?
Yeah, we have three different tests we have to pass. One is the 10% rule, they are, you know, they, that ninety two forty five.
That's why I asked, yeah.
Yeah, nine hundred and twenty five plus or minus would be that 10%. We have to, the two, the two largest districts cannot hold the majority, so that's another test we have to pass. And then the 5% vote for who would have to run again this next year. Um, but I think the beauty of having, you know, if the city of Bemidji is able to pass redistricting plan next week, that does give us the option to put these different plans together, to add that plan where we have three city wards with one commissioner, two city wards and probably a township with another commissioner, and that's one of the plans that you guys can review and look at. And, you know, once, if we get that ahead of time, if we get that to you ahead of time, it's not necessary that we have to present all of the plans at the public hearing. If the board picks their top two, um, from what we come up with, we can present those at the public hearing. Um, but having the Bemidji, having the city of Bemidji working on this and this far along at this point really gives us some extra time to do a little bit of work of this coming here.
Sure, so what's coming forward is the city is trying to be as perfect as possible.
I, I, that's my, that's my understanding.
They're, they're trying to equalize the population as close as they can among all five cities.
Too average.
Close to average, yeah. And I think that's, that's one of the only requirements for a municipality is to just be as equal as practical between their wards.
But they can go, you know, to the street.
Yeah, they can, they can, yeah, they have the ability to possibly take one census block with two people in it and move it from one ward to another to make that very.
And we can't split townships.
Or city wards, so we have to.
So once they establish a city ward, it's established and then we have to work with that.
That's why.
We can't split township right now. We can't say, you know, you take half of this township or a third of it.
So, which is why what I'm advocating for probably is, is a, is a mathematical impossibility because you're not gonna be able to find contiguous, um, uh, townships to the city wards that are small enough to satisfy the, 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 the population that is necessary. But it's a problem across our country.
Yeah.
And truly, yes, redistricting is crucial and critical. Turn gerrymandering came about because that's where, that's what I'm saying is that that's where the inequities come from, when you start arbitrarily going and finding a population that you know holds a certain way and you're plugging in to this particular, that, that's where gerrymandering came along, so. It, it, it has similarities to, to island zoning and the land zoning industry, it has, you know, there's, you can't do island zoning, you can't do gerrymandering, you can't. In the perfect world, that, those lines, that's a, that's a really tough, that's a tough one to read. Because you can just go like this and catch a neighborhood that holds a certain way or, it's, it's a, it's a tough one.
But Joey, uh, is, is there a public hearing option for Bemidji or proposed?
The city of Bemidji.
The wards.
I don't know what their process is.
I'm not a hundred percent sure either if they have a public hearing first on Monday and then wants that public hearing that they will.
Which brings up an interesting point. There is no public hearing at a state level, right? If you can't decide.
Those, they did, they did.
Those hearings where they were traveling, I mean, it's not the same, right?
Right, they didn't call it a public hearing, but they did get the input from citizens. There were some citizens from our area, they maybe even.
They maybe.
They, they were just, the, the Bemidji City Council, you know, but, yeah, they had input from various groups, I actually justified there.
So, so far what we have then is, we will put together options with, um, like we had talked about the three wards, um, in District Two. We will put another option that spreads those city wards out amongst the commissioners down in the Bemidji area. We will also put together an option, keeping all of the wards with just two commissioners. Are there any other options that you would like us to try out?
Apparently there are three commissioners, that's how three wards.
Correct, yes.
So not even have two, we're keeping three.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Cause it's, Commissioner Olson's district has three wards in the city, and my district has one, Austin's second one, right?
And at this point, if we leave all three with District Two, that population will be too great compared to the other profit, population in your districts.
Even, even before the city of Bemidji made any adjustments, it was above that 10% just for population change. When we looked at, what was the twenty ten sets of populations and the twenty twenty sets of population, it, it shot up over that 10%.
It was, I wanna say it was around ten thousand two hundred, if I remember correctly, was what, what the population of District Two went to? I don't remember it being ten seven, but, but, I think it could be, but, yeah, but it is, it is wildly out of step. I mean, I think that District Two could, right now, you know, could lose Eccles Township and just the three, the three wards would get pretty close. It would be a little bit less than ninety two hundred, but.
It'd go the other way, right?
Right.
You'd be one smaller district.
Right, but it's still the inside.
No, what you're saying, you're saying that those three wards, just the three wards without Eccles would be too high?
No, it wouldn't be too high.
Oh, well, okay.
That would be like, because.
They're actually put like ninety one hundred or something.
Okay.
It would be, yes, with, if we took any three wards in Bemidji after they do their redistricting,
it would be within our 10% threshold for commissioner districts.
Well, that's one of the, one of the, Sarah, I just wanted to look at. Remove Eccles from me.
Why not? I don't see how you're gonna be able to do, I don't, I mean, you're gonna have like, yeah, I don't think that.
A big one, one option, yeah.
Three wards in the city for district.
The beauty of having, having Kevin.
Yes.
Yes.
The beauty of having Kevin involved with this right from the get-go is he has, um, programmed a software that he has so we can sit and he can sit in front of his computer, Tom and I can watch, and he can pull in different townships, different cities, and we can.
Come by a software company named Mandarin. It's a great software. Where to make this plug in your district here.
And Jim can come and help us, you're now on.
I thought it was R O L S.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the other items that they've had us keep in mind were, for the, the instruction that I've received is any, anything that we anticipate happening in the future. And one of the items that I actually had a conversation, um, with an Eccles township supervisor last week or so concerned or wondering about the trend of annexation from the city of Wilton into Eccles. So one of the things that I would, right, really like to look at, right now Eccles is represented by Reed, the city of Wilton, I believe, is represented by Richard. So each time Wilton annexes a property, that property has to change commissioner districts. I would like to see Wilton and Eccles be in the same commissioner district. So that's one of the, the trends that we're going to try to redistrict to hopefully not have issues going forward.
I'm glad you brought that up because I was gonna ask, well, what happened to Eccles? I assume that, uh, and would that put him, uh, above the threshold of five or 10%?
Yes, Eccles is seventeen thirty.
Yeah.
I, I believe no matter what we do, we are gonna have to move more than city wards now.
Right, but then if he took on Eccles, he could give me a couple of his smaller ones that are adjacent to Turtle Lake. Which, you know, some of those smaller ones, they have to do, there's.
Yeah, do that shuffle.
We gotta do shuffle.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, that when, when, when you kick Eccles out of District Two, it's gonna have this spiral effect across the rest of the county these times.
No matter what we do, it will have a spiral effect against all of the commissioner districts. No matter how we account for the, the population shifts in the city.
But I, but I see that as, that being a benefit as far as we just talked about having, uh, some of the townships are smaller next to, another one being so close would make sense versus trying to get a, you know, a ward to commission that's already, that's pretty much, uh, more of a smaller town. It's the city of Bemidji that will put the annexation of the other one.
The one that was in place, the one that was finishing this finish.
That one finished in February twenty twenty.
So where do they have, do they have another one?
I do, I do think they have a couple of possibilities, but I don't, I don't think there's anything in the works.
Yeah, there's, I mean, I, I don't wanna say it's too loud because it's nothing's been decided. There was some talk with, uh, if they're bringing infrastructure and, um, you know, we, we just had Northern come upon us. But I don't think that there's any appetite with Northern, but especially with the impacted, um, the would-be impacted residents to, to have annexation be part of bringing infrastructure, bringing sewer and water uh, on the, on the, uh, twenty, oh, your twenty. So I don't think that there's anything, anything, well, there might be some specific, no, I don't think so. So, it sounds like, did you lose the press?
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I didn't wanna like get a, a bad quote, it's gonna scare a bunch of people about annexation, but I don't think that there's anything on the people.
So by the time it's on, the whole county's gonna have, uh, look a lot different after this redistricting.
I don't know that it will look a lot different, but we're going to try to minimize the change. But there does have to be some change.
So in, in District Four, there could be some.
There could be. There could be.
The population is really low.
Yeah.
My, yeah, definitely lowest.
Four is probably most immune to, to, in contrast to you. And thirteen years ago, when I first got elected. District five was the base. So it has slowly been shaved off through the redistricting process one time, right?
Through the annexation, yeah, is the main change for you.
The annexation wouldn't have affected it in a total, it'd be a zero, eight, rather, for Jim's district.
So it would be from redistricting.
Yeah.
What was your, what were your boundaries back when?
It's always been Turtle Lake Township, Northern Township, and Ward Three of the system. And they moved Ward Three to the city like this.
Yeah.
They've just taken that north-south line.
Right.
And they moved it this way. When they need to, they moved it back when they need to. But it was always Ward Three adjustment was the adjustment to mine.
Okay.
So this time, Kevin, your, your, uh, software might wanna look at, and I'm just saying this as a suggestion. Richard's district is a little bit of a gerrymander, but it was done to get the right population. Cause his district goes up over the top of mine and goes all the way over to Hagley, right? Is that your furthest east? From the east township, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's all the way from over to Hagley.
Yeah.
Way going east. So you give Hagley to, to Gosby and. Cause you might know the order.
Hagley, Hagley borders, right?
Yeah, you might need a little.
I don't think I'm gonna need anything, uh. My, my district, good, we don't need to mess with mine.
Just don't mess with Chris.
I got the right population. People are good.
You'll haunt your hat, right? My point is, we could get that Eccles township looking more like, uh, a, a, a tighter group by pulling Hagley down to you, get you up a little bit. The next one, I don't think that hits close enough to Turtle Lake. Because again, we gotta be contiguous.
The, the random, the East township.
Yeah, Alaska.
Alaska.
So as, if the city, no, it's still Richard.
It's still Richard, but that would be for, in the state.
Or I would think you could share Alaska.
Right. Oh, you got me, you got me.
There, there's possibilities, you know, if you, if you, uh, change that district two to three wards of the city and it falls within parameters, then Eccles goes to Richard. You gotta take some of Richard's that stretches over the top and push that down to Gosby and one or two down to me. Catch those on top. There's, and then that's just about it. That, that sounds, that sounds like.
Without, without team.
Right, that might, that might give us a possibility.
You got it, right, Kevin?
Yeah, and, and I'm not, yeah, I get, I'm, I'm thinking in concept, right? Just thinking about, we, we got this district that goes like this and stretches way over. And whenever I look at that map, I just say, that's odd. That's an oddball thing, but it was done specifically because Hagley, how many people in Hagley? Two hundred and seven, that's the most, maybe, right?
Hagley is three hundred and sixty.
Yeah.
They're growing.
Yeah.
Hagley nine one.
So I'll just make a quick comment too on, you said your idea was just in concept. And we have, Kevin and I are all taking notes, and we have, so we have four different concepts we're gonna put to the computer program. They might look, end up looking a little bit different because we want to present to you that type of concept that passes all of the tests.
Right, yeah.
So we won't, if, if it isn't Hagley that gets moved around, if it's O'Brien or something like that. Um, we might switch it a little bit, but we'll definitely, especially with the three of us here, hearing this conversation. I think we can get the gist of the different options that you wanna see, um, and we'll get to work on those hopefully next week, really.
I'd like to see the option of adding the, uh, like going, you, you come all the way around the circle to, and Vamiji Township and Ward Four and Vamiji Township are all melded together and having, having you have that.
And that is.
And, and, and then, no, having Eccles remain with one, you know, wards one, two and Eccles and, and adding in stuff into, you know, adding Wilton in, so that's open, it's not, you know, if you're.
See, that's, that's our problem, right? It's like, that's too big.
No, it's not.
Eccles and.
Not if you take Ward Four out of that district.
So Eccles and two wards of the city.
Right.
Instead of three.
Yes.
There, that's.
Yeah, and then adding in the, uh, Wilton and whatever else needs to get added in for townships in that to make, make that a district.
And then Richard.
And Richard would give us up to Tim.
Yeah.
And, and that because of his, with the, with Ward Four added, he would have a lot more added. And so his district wouldn't be the big C anymore.
Right, cause then you gotta give those one, two, three townships that go over the top.
Right, he'd give, he'd give some to you and give some to Tim.
And some to me.
Yeah.
And you, you mean.
And, and actually to Reeves District Two because, uh, uh, probably needed to add more in the district.
But.
Eccles and Eccles is already in there. And if you take Ward Four out, that's a lot of population.
Oh, 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 yeah. So there's, yeah, there is.
So Kevin, uh, next meeting, can you bring us, uh, five maps and some yarn on how we can.
And some ice.
One, one thing that I thought, oh, the, the G I S coordinator at the city yesterday or day before was just the, the public transparency with this too. Of getting maps on a, a city website and the county website to see if we can, so people can see what changes are being, changes have taken effectively in that.
You'd better turn on. So, um, how's affect our elections budget?
It shouldn't affect our elections budget or what do you mean? How, how would it affect it, I guess?
Will, will, will it increase, uh?
We'll still have the same number of, we'll still have the same number of ballots.
Yeah.
We'll still have the same number of precincts. We'll have less precincts, but still, um, like Ward Three had precinct one and precinct two. So now instead of running two separate elections, they'll just run one, but it will still be the same number of, um, residents in there, same number of ballots. Um, same machine programming.
So, so I, I guess my question is, so a district two being on the ballot this year uh, opposed from, from, you know, uh, previous elections, you know, normally it'd be two commissioners.
Right.
And so adding a third commissioner race, would it increase?
It really wouldn't because.
It's just one more line on ballot, right?
It's not gonna change.
Ballots are in there, there's already elections going on.
We're still going to have to do programming. It's going to look a little bit different. We're still going to need the same number of ballots, still going to have the same number of issues. So really, it's, it's big picture, it will be the same cost, just moved around a little bit differently.
And, and the redistricting, uh. Take the district theme one, I'll pack on, on the budget. Seven, I think it's already in the contract, correct?
It were, now that, now it's just.
So, yeah.
So Jody, you mentioned earlier about having a, uh, uh, public hearing on April fifth at our next board meeting. Is that?
Two board meetings.
Two, two board meetings. So, so when, when do we need to make that decision? Or when we're gonna have that, that, uh, public hearing?
I have to, I, or the Diane, it has to be published three weeks before the board meeting. Um, because you have an extra week between your last meeting in March and first meeting in April. The three, you could decide at the next meeting and, um, authorize the public hearing then, and we have the three-week window for publishing. Or if you wanted to decide tonight, if everyone's in agreement that April fifth sounds the best. Um, I did bring, uh, a resolution or a intent to have the public hearing, if you wanted to pass that tonight.
Well, you said that if we, if we didn't do it on April fifth, then we'd be kicking the can down to our next meeting.
Yes.
We would have virtually no timeline for anything after. So I would, I would suggest that we would pass the deal tonight to have a public hearing on the fifth, regardless.
We would have to cross our fingers this city board.
Yeah.
Well, they have to have it, but then it'd just give us less time to make that decision. But it's still, at least it wouldn't be putting our backs against the wall when we have to have our decision. It would just be giving us a little less time for you guys, because you're already working on the, the maps. So anyways, you know, the thirty-six, I think it was that we told them maps if you have that.
What's, what's the deadline for the city? Cause isn't the video.
Twenty-nine?
It's twenty-nine.
Yeah.
So if they take it till their very last due date, that would give us a little less than a week. I mean, I think it would give us six days to um, the public hearing date to put those maps together. The maps don't have to be published. The intent to hold the public hearing has been published.
So we should do that, then we can always kick the can down the road.
I, I agree.
We can, we can table the public hearing.
Well, and that was.
If we get to that point, say, no, we don't, we can't do the public hearing.
That's why.
We'll have everything in place to do that.
Yeah.
Or.
I, I say we do that.
At our next board, or not our next board meeting, our first board meeting in April, April fifth, we should.
Saberize for a public.
For a public hearing, yeah.
Should we put that under consent?
Yeah.
So if the, so if the public hearing has canceled on the.
Good.
We can get on it.
Then we'll have to push it.
I don't think, I don't think there's any, uh, publication limits that you can.
Well, we can do it.
Well, we will, we'll know at our next meeting.
Right.
Where we're at. So we have to push it to the nineteenth. We'll know that in two weeks.
Okay. Cancel it.
Table it.
Yeah, you should post it. Say we're waiting on one out.
Yeah.
Table it. We go back out on the, legally recovering our bases. Okay.
My concern would be if we re, or if it gets tabled or pushed back to the April nineteenth meeting. And we present two options and you have a big turnout at the public hearing. You would almost have to make a decision that night as to what you would want to move forward with.
Or especially.
Or we would have to have a special meeting that next week.
So, so are you guys okay with, uh? Waiting, uh, okay, the, the public hearing.
Yes, yes.
April five, uh, seven, like, seven. Seven days.
Okay.
Public hearing, or are we just between?
Public hearing April fifth.
So.
I guess now that we have that set for April fifth, is there a desire for us to come to the next work session? To talk about options, okay? To ask.
Kevin loves this stuff though. You know, with numbers and maps right up the village.
Can you bring, uh, coffee? Coffee.
Bring coffee.
It's gonna be a late night.
Oh, no, it's too great.
Bill's having a hearing. I don't know if it's midnight.
Right. We got even the science.
I think that's really the discussion that we wanted to have. Thank you, um, for providing your input. Are there any, or maybe any questions you do have for us?
Okay, here's my, uh, closing comment is, uh, thanks, thanks to, you know, the committee for providing this, uh, this work. I mean, I know we were kind of expecting, you know, we're kind of on our path to fully redistricting. Play out. I think it's time to come to one part of it. I think, I think we're excited to meet, you know.
We're at the end of the food chain.
Yeah. Figure this out.
We just, yeah, whatever. We got to figure out how we work for our elected districts. So really, we are in the bottom end of the. We have to figure out how to be embarrassed that we were there. If it's gonna work.
Wait, where's, where's discussion, Linda?
Yeah.
Commissioners, and when I started this PowerPoint, it was pointing below. So I picked the flowers to give us a sense of, I will be here at some near, near future. Much nicer today. So I'm here today actually to talk about, um, some of our workforce issues or, um, and what's happening and, um, gonna kind of catch on where our turnover, um, what our turnover is been looking like and why people have a leaving the county. Our recruitment, um, how we can continue to recruit top candidates and our retention, um, what we can do to keep our employees that we have. But looking at some historic information on turnover, back in twenty twenty, we lost, just keep talking, just tell us. Eighty-three employees, um, and thirteen of those retired out. And of those, with those thirteen employees, we lost three hundred and thirty-six years of experience. All the knowledge that locks up, um, the doors every time somebody retires and, um, actually, it, when you put in those numbers, it's kind of amazing. Uh, we always have, uh, twenty-five, twenty-eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-five, um, temporary people that we hire, um, during the year. We lost, um, one to a work comp or an injury type, um, we had seven terminations. We had four move out of the area, which left thirty-six people that left, that were still in our community, and they left to go to other opportunities. So that's kind of the target that I'm looking at today, of what, you know, how can we retain some of those people to prevent that from happening in the future. In twenty twenty-one, very similar, we lost sixteen to retirement. That was another three hundred and twenty-seven years of experience that, um, left us. We had the seasonal, um, we had some other, when I say work comp or help, um, people, either they left because of um, a work comp injury or left to take care of, um, a family member or their own health issues. Um, actually, one of those is actually a death, um, that particular year. So, um, unfortunate things that he's hurt. Um, we had six terminations. We had seven that moved out of the Vamiji area, but then we left forty people, um, leaving our employment to go to other, um, employers in the area. So far in twenty twenty-two, we've lost sixteen employees. Two of those are retiring and are making seventy years of experience with them. Um, we had two terminated, three have moved, um, and I kind of got a little more detail here. We've got three go to the city. Um, or, and between the city and the state, um, we've had three of them that have left because of family commitments, loss of daycare. Some of those issues that you talked about before, daycare is an issue in the area. And then we've had three of them that gone to other opportunities. So where are?
These are full workforce.
About, in July, it would be right around four twenty with our summer workers and stuff. We usually, we stay right around four hundred if we get full staff.
So if eighty-three to eighty-six plus, uh, two, plus twenty twenty, we have about forty.
They would create eighty-eight.
Like again, twenty, some of those we choose are the summer workers that come and go and. So these are some, a list of some of the places that we're losing employees to. And, you know, we see the state of Minnesota, the city of Vamiji, Havre, Goodwater Counties, Vamiji, Aviation, B S U, Sanford, um, Red Lake P D. Aiken County, they become self-employed, um, they stay at home, back at the, in the state home care because they've lost daycare. They left to become a deputy for other agencies, um, they left due to stress of the job. And, um, some of them were going back to, um, complete this link.
Linda, that list isn't, uh, is any kind of a chronic, uh, listing, is it like?
No.
Most of them went to the state of Minnesota or?
No, it is not. It's a random list. I think we've lost, right, you know, I mean, I could tell you lost at least three to the state of Minnesota just recently. We've lost city of Vamiji. If they post a highway.
But there isn't anybody that is a, a big man.
That's a, if you have to lose the city of Vamiji, if they open up a position, we're gonna lose one of our coworkers. And that's one of the trends that we're going to see, um, and have seen. So our recruitment numbers, um. Back in two thousand and nineteen, when you look at the number posting we have, that is kind of deceiving. In twenty twenty-one, we started really heavily recruiting for the correction officers. So we have been posting up for a correction officer and a correction officer one every two weeks. So we have been posting up. So that's gonna really grab up the number of postings that we have out there. But those are the number of jobs that we actively posted for. But if you look at the applications received, back in two thousand and nineteen, um, we received over fifteen hundred applications. Now we're receiving eleven hundred applications a year. Um, we received over fifteen hundred applications, now we're receiving eleven hundred applications a year. Um, and twenty twenty-two, if you multiply that out, we're right on trend, to continue to receive those, um, about eleven hundred applications. For the same opening, so our applicants have decreased about twenty-six percent in that time. Um, which is a huge, um, decline for us to be making our selections for our, um, employees. So where do we post it, how do we get the word out? Um, our website is one of our biggest, um, hits, we are on ID, we're on governmentjobs.com. We're on the Minnesota Works, which is the unemployment site, um, the Ohio Mirror and the Byline obviously are our official papers, so we advertise in those publications. We put all of our job postings up, association, Minnesota Counties website. We send all of our postings to BSU, Career Forces, the old Roman's line staff, so that's another employment agency. Um, we send everything to the Minnesota Chipboard, Red Lake, um, the, the American Indian Resource Center. And we go over, um, the Leech Lake Employment Services, um, the Northwest Indigenous Community Development Center. We send it to several colleges, Hitting Alexandria, they're big law enforcement, um, colleges that we always. Send all of our postings to the Northwest Technical College, um, we send to our rural, um, cities. So we had Washington State where we're blacked up by having postings, um, of the most communities. Um, any law enforcement, well, jobs are always posted on the Minnesota Post Board. And, um, when I say targeted colleges, so example, if we can hire our posting for our assistant county attorney, we're going to target colleges. That have law programs, um, and we send for the foresters. Right, and we, like, the foresters, there's certain colleges that offer forestry, um, opportunities, so we always target those colleges as well when we're doing our job postings. And off of our website, I was able to pull, so where are, where are applicants here in the modern openings? Um, our website is another one place that they said it's near postings, so if you go on our website, you can sign up and get notice of any job postings that we have. Um, so if they're interested in, um, a social work position, they can go on and say, I wanna hear about a social work position. As soon as you post that job, they're gonna get an email saying, your job is posted, go look and see what it is. So we try to take advantage of that and push our applicants, application out, who are interested in different positions. But you'll see that the website indeed, um, county employees, actually, you know, ten percent, they hear about from county employees, so they're one of our best. Um, advertising thing, so encouraging, um, employees to recommend us. And then it goes down, you know, from a friend, from, um, Pioneer, um, Minnesota Works, and then the rest is a combination of other sites.
So with the. What, please, uh, being the best, uh. Do we have an incentive program or, or anything like that?
We've not at this time, it was when we did the jail, um, court case court, that was something that was discussed about us. On how we can incentivize some of those, um, it was not an item that moved forward, um, to do that, we wanted to go in. A different direction that has been discussed.
Newspeak, or, I don't know how many of us still agree with this.
Well, and the pioneers are, are our official newspaper, so we have to post.
I just kind of wonder, uh, if there's somewhere in the budget that we can cut that. Sentivize or.
There is a difference in safety, my company actually does that. I mean, they keep rationing out how much money they give for referrals, if, uh, if they haven't got enough, or have a full position, then. Bonus, like, yeah, if, if the person gets qualified and actually gets hired, then they give enough.
Well, this is just a breakdown of the hires that we've done over the last, um, few years, um, and if you remember in two thousand and nineteen, we took on the solid waste. Um, employees, so that was a big jump, in twenty nineteen, we had the staff off, and that ran over a little bit into twenty twenty. And, remember too, that we do a lot of promotions, internal promotion, a lot of our current supervisors. Were hired on as entry-level employees and worked their way up through, um, through the ranks, and. I'm pretty proud of that, because it does show that people are able to start and work their way up in a career for Beltran County. And, um, the promotions that we have on, I didn't, I got that in software in twenty twenty, so I don't have the statistics of twenty nineteen, but, um, it's. Exciting to see that people are being promoted and, um, moving up in the town. So what are our challenges? Like everybody else, the great resignation, um, I was just seeing today that, you know, twenty twenty-one. Three point nine five million people per month left their jobs, and the total next closest to that was in twenty nineteen, when it was three point five million. So the jump that has happened on a monthly basis of people that are leaving the job, and choosing not to be in the workforce or. Taking new opportunities has gone up greatly, um, in just the last couple of years. Market competitiveness, um, we've always tried to be competitive in the market in the Remigie. And Beltran County area, um, we are seeing our wages are now below our competitors. We used to see applications on a regular basis from some big employers, Sanford, Delta Dentsure, some of those. We're not seeing them anymore, but paying more than yet, so we're, we're not able to pull, um, employees from other places within the Remigie community. The workload and stress, um, if you talk to Chris Muller, he's gonna tell you how the calls are dispatched. We, um, seven takes versus other, um, area dispatch centers, our social workers have larger case work. Lords than our neighboring counties, we, um, our deputies take more calls than other deputies and local other agencies. Our license agencies use more customers than most other county, um, around counties around us. Our economic assistance department sees more clients, um, than other areas, um, agencies do. Our employees seem to go to other counties, get the same pay or more, and lower their workload and the stress level. And, um, and they're doing it, we are losing our employees to other, um, agencies. Our family insurance costs, um, we, we have a very competitive benefits package that we offer employees, and they take advantage of it. But our cost for our family health insurance has been a physical strain, so it would be completely bad. Um, so it's something that, um, we feel the need to maybe, um, take a look at that, I don't know what the solution, I don't even have a suggestion for a solution, other communities, there. Kind of counties, agencies have approached that in different ways, but it's something that I think we should be open to looking and seeing what that looks like for Beltran County. Our longevity and turnover. We're losing our long-term employees, um, to other agencies with higher pay scales, so we're training them, and then they're moving on to other agencies. As customers, a lot of them gain turnover costs and, um, those training costs, so they're taking that knowledge and, you know, go through it. The vacant fill guidelines, we have situations where, um, we'll post a position, and either we don't receive any applications, and we don't see, receive any. Qualified applicants that we're able to hire, so we're posting multiple times, so instead of being able to fill our job, actually to be posting, we're posting some of those jobs to be free funds. To be able to find out if you can steal those positions. Um, and then when we do offer a job, our pay scale, um, we're having people turn us down, that we are not able to be competitive. Even if they're a little below the minimum and offer a higher wage, pay for experience or something, they're turning the sounds and not taking positions. And the union pressure, um, I'm already here and we're, we're starting, we're in negotiations this year, and we'll be going into negotiations. And the business agents are already telling us wages are going to be number one thing that's when we come at, at negotiation. So what are the next steps, or what are we, um, a market analysis, so we did our, um, job evaluation study back in two thousand and fourteen. And, and we've been maintaining it by reviewing positions that they come up, we feel that our positions are rated properly in, in relation to each other. Um, but we need to do a market analysis to find out where we compare and to what kind of adjustments have been competitive with other agencies and other places around the area. If you remember, um, the wage scale modifications that we made back in two thousand and eighteen. Um, we were seeing where our wage scale ended too soon, so we were happy, happy, it was slower than other places, so. At that time, um, we were going through the auto home placement crisis that we were in, we were at a twenty-seventh period we were dealing with. We couldn't do a full three percent on step nine and ten and do it for a continuous. Um, step increment, we adopted what we could, um, adding step nine and ten as a fifteen and a twenty-year step. But what that's doing, um, after you get to your, your eight, you don't get another step increase in your fifteen. If you go to another county or to another agency, step eight at their level is higher than what we're we end at. So they're having to wait until year twenty to be able to get to the top of the pay scale, so looking at possibly some modifications to the, to the salary provision. And back in twenty eighteen, when we adopted this, our wages at the bottom were competitive. At that point, now we're starting people at seventeen something an hour in some of these positions, and. People are dealt definitely twenty dollars an hour, but, but that, so we're starting over two dollars an hour less for a lot of our entry-level positions. Um, to where other agents or other businesses are starting in the counties, so. They're not government agencies, but they're a big competitor of ours for, for employees. So, um, reviewing the, um, insurance contributions. Oh, I, okay, wait, I'm gonna go back, sorry. Flip, flip for my notes here, um, just as a couple of examples, um, the city of Remigie. Did, um, their job evaluation in twenty eighteen and adopted it, so now we're competing with the city, that's one of our biggest competitors for some of our life jobs. Uh, highway maintenance worker in both the city to make three to five dollars an hour more than working. So we're losing some of our seasoned, um, operators because they didn't go and start making more, um, and then. At the, um, a police officer, starting pay with no incentives, makes at least a dollar an hour more, and they're making at least two dollars an hour more after. Um, eight years after their eight years of experience. An assistant county attorney, and for the city, will start two dollars and seventy cents higher, and after eight years, we're making eight dollars and twenty-four cents an hour more than our county. So there is a discrepancy, um, city of Remigie adopted it in two thousand and eighteen, at the same time we were settling our contracts last time. So those higher wages, um, are in effect for the city, and we're seeing those effects. So our, um. Review of the insurance contributions, um. Some of our families are seeing a large, um, out-of-pocket premiums that other agencies are softening, um, so. There are many different philosophies on how that subject should be, um, approached, and we will, it's time to look at some of those philosophies and see if there's something that needs to be adjusted. Accordingly, to make, um, a better package, more suitable for the families that are coming to work in Beltran County. As a next step, um, we have a personnel committee, it is, consists of, um, the county administrator, myself, the HR director, and one county board member. Which, um, Richard Anderson is appointed, is sitting on that committee at present time, we'd like it to be the. Personnel committee to look at some of these, um, options and situations, and how, on how we might be able to, um, move forward. And then analyzing the financial implications, um. So there you like charts, here's the cola and inflation and social security, um, possibly in comparison. We're the dark blue line, and maybe you see that we were staying pretty close along the starts of two thousand and eight, this little part right here. Um, starts of two thousand and eight, goes to two thousand twenty-one, and we were able to stay pretty competitive up until the last couple of years. And twenty twenty-one is really blowing us out of the, the water here on what competitiveness, um, is for our wages and stuff, and. I think Tom, if you wanna talk more about the financial, he's, he's put together some. Um, and is putting together some different strategies that might be able to be taken up, and, um, we'll contact him later, but this is a preview. As to what's coming, um, this is reality, and the difficulties we're having, I'm sitting here in a lunch, I'm sitting, getting nod, and I see your nod behind you. What I'm mentioning, the difficulties and different things that are happening, and David as well, um, this is, and, and Bruce. We, we just lost another twelve there, this is we, um, and he has a lot of experience. My favorite thing are sunsets, this is what I'm looking forward to, the flowers and the sunsets.
Just a quick observation, I, I think it's, this is, uh. It's not a specific syndrome here, it's, it's. And it's, uh, it's something that I've heard, all we've heard me say before. You know, we're comparing ourselves to the public sector, and a lot of these private companies that I call quasi-public sector agencies. Like Beltran, you know, like, like Sanford Health, you know, they, you know, have healthcare costs come down, heck, no. They just drive them up and they, they pay more wages, Beltran Electric, had their rates been going down, I don't think so, they just. Drive them up and they pay more wages, so we, we've lost on the battle, because, like you said, Linda, I. You know, eight to ten years ago, we were, we were a go-to wannabe job, and now we're not anymore. Yeah, we have lost that, we've lost that edge, we used to get people from the city, and the natural progression was. Into the city, from the city to the county, from the county to the state, you know, we trained people and then usually we get a job at the, at a state level, because. Benefits were a little better and the wage rate was higher, but we don't have that go-to anymore. We used to get a, we used to get a lot of those jobs from the exact opposite, the inverse of what you just presented. It used to be coming in us, now it's gone in us, that's just my observation.
I just want to make the comment that, you know, to move into this very next, something that we. Uh, discussions on that, TX board, you were especially talking about this, uh, maybe last Friday, one fall. There's a. I don't, I don't know if there's a shortage, because I'm, I'm, there's a shortage for all there, it's just, uh, you know, trying to attract. It is the difficulty, you know, because. Your whole presentation has said it, people are reading, because this and that, and the counties are. Are taking from other counties and things like that, so, uh, I just want to mention that this is on the AMC board. Christian Olson, more can, can talk, the rest of the issues that we're having.
If it's any consolation, the chief, uh, police for Leech Lake was complaining about, about us taking this, this. So everybody, but yes, everybody is experiencing it, where it seems to be especially to the best.
And just, my biggest concern would be that last piece, the financial analysis of it, and, uh, having a knee-jerk reaction to. The inflation spike and, and, you know, how, how feasible is it for us to try to match what the city is doing? I mean, it's, uh, we don't, we, we don't, you know, our tax base just can't support it, uh, seven percent or ten percent. Uh, you know, we're gonna exacerbate our problem, people moving, moving out of the gully and, and going to the other gully because of lower taxes, something like that, as well, too.
Chair, in my industry, when you used to get a state job in the architectural consulting industry. You could only charge for that project, a certain modifier, a certain percentage. So if you were gonna bill a particular employee out at seventy-five dollars an hour, you had to make sure you were paying them X number of dollars. So it was direct personnel cost times, the magic number back then was two point five. So, if you were paying somebody thirty-five dollars an hour, then you could bill them out at two point five times the thirty-five. The other interesting thing now is, I'm running into plumbers that are billing themselves out at a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour as a master plumber.
Well, Mr. Chair, well, what happens when we need a plumber to work on an agency? He'll wait for us to speak, but we don't have the option to hire it down, right? I'll source it, because we can't afford that either, right? So we're.
No, rocking hearts.
We're stuck in the personnel act, so it's going to be tough for us, they have a thirty-six million dollar payroll right now.
They had a thirty six million dollar payroll right now. Yeah. So when you think about what is it going to take? This is one of those things where you push dirt, right? And, and if you, if you keep pushing dirt, keep pushing dirt, keep pushing, but that's harder and harder it does. And, and that's why we have to get a handle on this sooner than later. So.
Yeah, I think you just said thirty six million.
Right.
Not very long ago, it was twenty four to twenty five million. It was a million per payroll for every two week period. And then, right, Jim, and all of a sudden we hear twenty four to twenty five million a year. And now we're at thirty six in a very, very short period of time. So it, it's, it's concerning.
It's very concerning. It's very concerning.
A lot of rhythm and curve is, is going because we're doing it on a percentage basis. Well, I think, I think three percent of this, then the next year, three percent of that. It's not a, a straight line curve.
Yeah, I think the way that it gets done creates that this and challenges at the same time. I, I think that aside is what we do, what we are suggesting here is that there's some work being done. And we'd like to get the personnel committee together to pre-plan what we may or may not be able to do. Um, I think there are opportunities that, um, present themselves now that maybe happened in the past. We take advantage of it in the past. But, um, I, I've had this very same situation in the last community that I attended. And, um, it's, I'm, I'm not going to, it's very expensive to get out of this. It is. But I think we have some solutions for the board to, to consider that would be helpful. I'd just like to ask and, and just between saying for us to start rolling up our sleeves and work contracts. Um, with the personnel committee, with the audit director's office. And, uh, start, start running various scenarios and numbers and things like that and bring that back to you. Um, I sort of liken this to what we did with the creating a task force for the sheriff's office. You know, we, we really didn't know the problem yet when we developed this task force. And when we started the task force, the first month and a half, we thought it was all, uh, recruits. And the recruitment issue was the, was the problem. We put a lot of time and effort on recruitment strategies and doing the group call analysis. And then we found out, well, wait, it's actually not recruitment. It's really retention. And if you solve a retention problem, then you reduce your recruitment problem. And so we started the retention strategy that seemed to be taking us from thirty eight percent to now almost sixty five percent in six months, eight months' time. Is it costing us money? You bet it's costing us money. But that seventy thousand dollars we put to that program is paying dividends on the savings or the alternative costs that we would otherwise be spending now. And, and that's kind of where we're at here on this situation, except unfortunately, this is workforce wide. And it certainly impacts some workforce more than it does others. But, um, but that's where I think we as a team want for a look at this all globally across the organization. Um, because what we can't afford is the trend lines continuing the way we've started to see them. I think, you know, we're in a good spot. We're seeing trends. We, we should do something about that. If we don't, then I think we get to a point where the options we have available become less and less and less. And we have to come more and more to the community and to the organization.
And, uh, we've got two minutes, so I want to give, uh, Mr. Anderson an opportunity before we, um, I take it. The personnel committee is already established committee. So I don't think you really need any, uh, more approval. It's just a matter of, uh, you guys getting together and figuring out the guys to schedule up something.
I was just going to say, people don't want less service. They want more. They don't want their roads to be empty. They want improved. So it's going to cost us a lot to keep doing that or we have to cut that.
And we don't have enough time to hear about roads tonight.
Okay, so, um, before we adjourn, we're, uh, road improvements. I would like to move back to the regular agenda, I intend, uh, because I feel that, uh, eight and nine will be fairly, fairly close. Make that adjustment. I mean, uh, Christian, a turn for a minute, uh, text break.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual constitution.
Uh, General Tom from the board chair, uh, from North County, uh, uh. Allow us to realize, uh, your space here is seen, you should get up here. So, uh, we want to sit and address the board.
I think I'm the only unofficial person here.
Oh, you're very official. You're the board.
Yeah.
Do you have any comments?
I'm happy to be here as it comes.
Yeah.
So we'll move on to move on to the agenda within the different structures of divisions. Okay, I'd like to, uh, we're going to move number ten to, uh, seven today. That's the jail project subcommittee membership expansion. At the redistricting public hearing for April fifth, the second case. Then we have next work session, add the redistricting discussion again. That would be. That's not, all right, and we add votes and administration for example. Yes, yes, and, uh, I think that was. What's wrong?
Well.
So, or, or. With that. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson again, for the discussion. Now, I'm comfortable with all those favors and questions tonight.
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda as amended.
Motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second? So, I mean.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chair, will you take? Sorry, it's a lot of. Uh, any further discussion? Now, I'm comfortable with all those favors and questions tonight.
Aye.
Close. I don't think on the regular agenda, uh, structure resolution.
Chair. At the last board meeting, I represented a problem that Tom shared was in, uh, update the board on the water sewer extension project that we are forwarding by. Uh, was the board required to, um, develop the investigation of support to that project? So what could that resolution come view, see me for your view and hopefully approval? Um, and so if you have questions on that, I'm happy to address that.
I'm going to move that. Uh, second. Motion by Commissioner Luke, except for Commissioner Wolfson, we have the discussion. What I was favoring tonight.
Aye.
Close. Attorney. Dr. Valuation, consolidating takes lead and.
Yes. Well, at the last meeting, um, Anne and her crew presented the level of research in the, um, department. And what that was going to look like. And we got the job evaluation ratings back for the consolidated inpatient and workforce impact lead. Um, they come in and pay grade six for the consolidated inpatient and they rate that for workforce impact lead. We met with the union and discussed, um, the placement on the salary scale and they have approved and are in agreement with the placement that they currently in rated this all that. So we're here to, um, ask for, um, authorization to move forward, placing those on the salary scale and move forward with the. Those will both be motions from within, not build new positions without a motion from within.
I make a motion for that. Motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Olson with the expression. So, uh, based on my last presentation, we got, uh. Please, uh, so, uh, figure nine, is that, that's the top. Those words, figure nine, falling scale of.
You think so?
Yeah, okay.
No.
Paper nine is, I think there's twenty.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight.
Or is it even a grade?
Grade, so we're not paid grade nine, which is actually two favorite when they head out to follow the people that they are, um, supervising and lead.
Instead of the agenda, they're providing control.
Correct. Because we're, uh, eligibility specialist to retire. And instead of filling that at that level, we're going to fill that with an eligibility specialist. With one, which is two favorite four. So then instead of building that position, we'll be bumping up to lower paid people, um, to be they not those even position. Also, there are a lot of reimbursement from the state that comes into play because the consolidated state is a hundred percent of the state. So that doesn't really affect the, um, levy or the.
Thank you.
Question. Now, I'm comfortable with all those favors and questions tonight.
Aye.
Four, third, thank you. One, that's great. I was, uh, moved to the.
Oh, we went that, okay, sorry.
Thanks for, for sticking it on. I gave everybody a handout of what this was. Prepared for the first meeting with the Bushway and also work session. And like, I'm sure. So some of this is, and, uh, just a quick refresh for you. But it is an interesting reminder of how many miles we're away. We may think probably seven hundred fifty miles away. Obviously, climate, so we did assets, some of the chip heroes. Two hundred fifty is county roads. That's a hundred percent local, that covers those. I'm organized, I'm sure.
You're getting gunshot, aren't you? You thought there was going to be a bunch of here people ready to chew on. You're getting gunshot, aren't you? You thought there was gonna be a bunch of here people ready to chew on your ball.
There isn't every other.
They're ready to chew here, they're ready to rip a ball, nothing else. They just wanna talk about the pothole that they're running all the right down here.
The last meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're as well talked about.
Bridges, uh just the refresh on that. Communities are responsible to inspect all bridges and township bridges, the city of Pittsburgh. But uh we're responsible to inspect all township level bridges. So there's forty four of them out there. Eighty one are actually. They maintain them, you just inspect them. We've got no hire. Is that, we have a person hired for that. We, right now, we have to contract that out. We contract with two different engineering firms. We are training one of our guys, but to do that, that takes, it's like a five year process to get somebody to. We lost our guys retiring. We have approximately a twenty million dollar budget. Well, then it goes to construction. That's up and down depending on type of funding projects. I'd like to show this graph right here because it shows that our roads are improving. The green is getting bigger. That is uh showing improvement. However, our red is getting bigger here in twenty twenty, but overall, our roads are improving. Since we boost rest with. Yes, we got it to the red.
That's okay, you won't have that.
Somebody else.
I included the agenda bill because that listed all the projects in this southeast area and I got a map. Just again, showing all the projects that are coming up. One thing I do wanna point out since I've got the boards here is this project on twenty, it was supposed to happen this year. We are getting close to being able to not be able to do that. Project with the National Park Service approval to right away from. Make the chief department. So it's just getting into that process and we are gonna run up to a deadline of the end of April when we can. Trees. Because of the one year back. Now that date, you can't cut down trees unless you expect their retreat for. It's restrictions that we end up dealing with. So at some point. Don't get that basement where you just do commerce on the two to do that project. What we'll probably do is do a fall start on the project. Project incrementally creatures of all that's gone, utilities can do their stuff. That is a kind of an update on that project. So far, we're pushing ahead and pushing the park service to get that going. Had this out to Stover's office last time. Second project. Giving that to you shortly, just.
You wanna email me that or whatever.
So if that project is a goal, then we're ready to go with our project on twelve. We got plans through that. That's the simple thing overlay. So. Yeah. Push that project up. That is the project that we're next year. So that is one project that we do a quick swap on.
Or we're gonna have some, some efficiency cost savings though with the twenty along with fifty seven, same time.
We would still put fifty seven and twelve together.
Oh, okay.
Twelve.
Close enough, right? It would still, still be crossing. Okay.
Yeah, that's the same piece and yeah, it's a paying project.
Right. And the additional distance is no big deal. Yeah.
There's one that runs by your house. The, the most likely source rather for that is up in the fifty seven area or. It's in that area, so. Yeah. That's, I guess, the projects in the next five years will all be in the craze areas. But then the green will grow up on the bar. Yeah. These.
They grow up in the real.
There's some red ones, but like that, for example, the project on twelve would be in the green or something with the blue. Call me on my stick and, you know, it's a fair condition. So yeah, trying to keep it real good, it's a good shape. People spit all the way on it. Thank you for the effort. Sorry, we ran out of time, but we appreciate you. No, I just never know.
I'd rather take this meeting than, you know, yes. But that was all instructor.
I do. That was. No, that would be a blue. That'd be fair.
Yeah. Get a cup of coffee and put it between your knees for going for a ride, that's Martin.
Are there any other questions for Bruce? Mine go.
The only one that he gets defensive purpose.
Thank you, Bruce.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a very short report for you. Um, I wanted to just again thank the ten lake town hall staff and board for hosting us again. Uh, you have inquired as to the labor and walkers on these. Uh, so I sent you the update regards to the course one that I recently had with their executive director. Uh, and then I just wanna follow up saying that currently they are, uh, you know, still current on their lease. Uh, and they didn't give me any suggestion that that would be the case in the near future. So they are looking current for that space as well. Uh, given the development that they have. So um, the other thing I wanted to add to that is, uh, back in the summertime, I was approached by somebody at TSA. That's federal services office looking for space that at the time didn't have. So um, we have re-engaged that working phase to see if they still have any space. And I'm awaiting a response from them. Could be forthcoming or maybe they're not interested in longer, but I figured, you know, that will be had to run through the general like that.
Obviously, they had a three story building somewhere in the area, you know, and I find that so interesting, you know. As I shared, just for boards, for boards information, um, another consulting firm contacted me for the drawings for the Steve Hill building. In regards to this particular lease and I did share that with them. I'm not part of the project at all, but just for your information, they are moving forward with some pretty. Uh, specific planning to move into that space and it looks with all indications, it looks like they're. All their intentions are to move into that for the twenty twenty two startup school. So that's what I know from the private sector inside information. It's all public information because the other consultant firm asked me and I saved them the money and had to go in and re-measure everything. Because I had it all done for Steve Hill. So they're, they're working with another firm developing their space. So it looks like they're moving forward for twenty twenty two.
Um, I'm just gonna quickly update you. Representative Stover had made a request of us to get a new project that may be pushed towards the federal appropriation. For this next coming year that we'd be able to receive those. I wanna let you know that we put in three projects. One of them, the. A sheriff just talked with you about a twenty to twenty five million dollar request at Yale. Also, that one did get submitted. Uh, we also submitted two hundred twenty five thousand dollar request for the old store courthouse renovation. That will largely run us about two hundred fifty thousand dollars, but we have twenty five thousand that all uh. Are preserved for that. And then we did also put in for the Birchmont infrastructure that the workers who extended project that he just issued support for. We requested eleven million dollars uh out of thirteen million dollar project costs. So those were the three projects. So you're aware of it, you know, the cross paths was representative or a question during things.
So we did that, sorry, Mr. Chair. We did that on behalf of Northern Township.
Uh, we did it with Northern Township, yeah, because we were asking also for funding for the Brooklyn.
For sure.
So now I take the man at both, um, we could get sent to the, so we collaborated with Northern Township. Uh, that's all happened.
So now we're just there. We can offer the rest of the lobby.
Yeah, I'll be going down here in uh seven minutes. Then I'll down this gate. I'll go down this and so. Uh, I'll be lobbying tomorrow and, and uh. It's not a lot of work. I, I, and then I guess for a regular report, I. I, that's fine. Right. Tonight.
Um, a little bit of a setback. Uh, HRDC, we offered opposition to a new executive director. He accepted and now I'm in the back of, so we're onto to a second option and. We will have the. Yeah. Now that might be solid just to have the experience of the first one half of the show actually employed. So. So that's, that was interesting. Fair board, that we, that of course are part of the next fair. I don't tell me like your cat standpoint to looking forward to having everybody like the candidate meeting again, introduction with the bear on the little thing added there. So. That's gonna be nice. Uh, I missed the headquarter board meeting, final mission meeting last night or earlier. And uh, I already talked to Reed about being a sub for me at the Northwest Emergency Communication Board meeting next week because I double booked with that and. That's it for my report.
Darren. I'm good. I'm good too, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll be brief here. There are two things that I have to mention about, well, I'm going off the. The best conference will be on there. And I met, I was invited to a meeting with a farm hero. He leaves back and uh, and they would like to come to the board and skip a little presentation on what they, what they do and, and things like that. Figures well. It seems like some, some good information that, that, you know, would be helpful for us. I mean, they have. Their, their numbers for, for cows, you know, they, they have a number for cows to be having in the county and that's something I don't know and maybe something that'd be interesting for us to know. Doesn't seem like a too controversial item that could benefit us all. So I. Uh, I found the good time contact Tom to set up a day that we can come. I know I think sometime in March is a. Speed week. They asked if we can support the project, our resolution. We need equal time and rocks. So that, that was one of the things. That wasn't a committee figure. It's kind of a, I think.
I think I went a month earlier. I went to January. I was gonna go in December. Yeah, I think, I, I think we, we underappreciate the role of A and B. You know, there's a lot more. Well, I'll say that from, from a herd perspective, from a managing perspective, but there's, there's a lot of farming that goes on in the county. So I think it'd be worth the vote.
Chair was showing a lot of operate the farm equipment that he has a lot of experience with. And.
I saw that, yeah.
That's great.
And I think I haven't had the electric damage as of last week.
Yeah, it's the last week.
And that, that's it. And not the same fall, so. It was.
Motion to adjourn.
Which by, which Jake second by.
Aye.